2025 regular work sheet.
At your word at six and Dr. Thomas is my dearest, our invocation and I am what dearest in the pledge of lynching.
Please rise. Let's pray God thank you for this time together and thank you for our school district and just give us the wisdom to make good decisions and just to be with us in in our meeting tonight. It's in your sweet, you know, in name we pray amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank our greers at tonight's meeting. It's Dr. Angie Cratchmore, principal of the elementary in that town, it's principal at Big and High School. The next sign of his approval of the agenda, Dr. Thomas Stephen, any amendments to the agenda?
No ma'am, I do not.
God, the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So I'm moving.
Go ahead, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor. The agenda has been approved. But at the time, I will turn me over to you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. So at this time, we'll call up our academic officer, our chief academic officer, Dr. Abby May, because she will give us an update on student achievement.
Look, I didn't even have to clear a room. Everyone stayed. Okay, so I, oh, yes, I need the clicker unless I can just magically make it happen. Thank you, Beterus. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so as always, I'll be reporting out on goal area one. As we enter this next year, we've been doing a lot of work on our professional learning. We kind of mentioned that in the board meeting and about the budget last time. So we're going to kick off the year on July 25th with a teacher-led, so district-wide teacher-led curriculum day. It's going to look a little bit like a typical conference that we go to. So they'll have three opportunities, so three different sessions, an hour long. They'll be led by their peers throughout the district. They'll get a choice of what they want to learn about and collaborate on. And then there'll be little breaks in between. We'll do, we're hoping to get some snacks and maybe some coffee or something to pep them up. But we'll have really a focus on growing and that our theme will be great things grow here. That little circle we've been kind of using within teaching and learning is about consistency, collaboration, and calibration. So we'll be rooted in consistency, cultivated by collaboration, and then enriched by calibration. So that'll be kind of our focus this year, still those three things. And that will kick off the year of focus on growing together. So all of our principals and their teams have been working on what professional learning is going to look like in their building, how they want to grow their staff. And so we're putting together a more formal PL plan so that the teaching and learning department can support them and come alongside our admin and our leaders in growing our teachers. So we're very excited about that. That's it. Any questions for me? Who wants to come and learn alongside? I know maybe I do.
Are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. At this time, I'll call up our chief financial officer, Amy Smith, to give us final update.
It's clapping, man. Alright, we've got our June update for you. Now, this is not the final report. We are still in the process of closing out for April 25. We were closed the first week of July, so we got our first round of bills in. It was nice. So we have processed those today. We processed three runs of checks today. So we will still have some bills coming in. We do still have revenue coming in. So just know we will continue to update you on the June report, but this is where we are at this moment. And I forget that I'm supposed to click. This is strategic plan goal area four, organizational operational effectiveness. Our summary report here. I'm going to go ahead and click into this so you can see each page. And our general fund revenue, we have collected at this time 99.56% of our budgeted revenue. Now, I have a budget amendment tonight that I'm asking for where I'm adding some revenue. So that number, that percentage will go down for now, but we're still in great shape when it comes to revenue. This includes all QBE allotments that are, have been allotted to us and that carries us all the way through August. So I wanted you to see as close to the real thing as you can, but we will still have TAVIT tax money. We will have railroad equipment, forced land protection. Well, forced land protection, we received intangible real estate transfer tax and property taxes coming in over the next two months. So that can change a good bit. But we're in great shape right now. Expenditures, we have expended 93.44% of our budgeted expenditures. Like I said, we do still have bills floating in. Anything that comes in that is for the month of June, we have to back into June. There are a couple of different methods, but we will be doing that across the next probably three weeks. And then hopefully by the first week of August, we won't get any more bills that are holder like that that will be for June. We get most of them within four weeks, but every now and then it might be five. So we'll keep updating those and put it in the appropriate year. Our consolidation of funds, we have recorded the transfers made through May. We're doing the final June transfer. Before we complete the June transfer, we have to make sure all those bills that may have to do with these funds are complete. So again, we'll keep you updated on that. No debt in our county, I think it is. In our SPOSS account, our revenue from the month of June was $794,347.07. We collected GSFIC funds for our construction projects in the amount of $218,546.08. Our interest earned was $972.95. Our expenditures totaled $1,757,308.09, and that brought our month-end East SPOSS balance to $11,737,631.17. Again, we're on target with all of our plans right now. We will have a couple of more entries to record in this area. Any of those construction projects too that had outstanding balances for June, we receive them in July. And it typically is about the third week and maybe even the fourth week of July before we receive those. I know two bills have come in for the larger ones. So we're waiting in particular on one more that will keep you updated on this account too.
And that's primarily the Oscar ring.
Yes, those are our, those are our big money projects. Special revenue funds, we've collected 91.2%, 26% of our budgeted revenue and expended 97.15% of our budgeted expenditures. At this point, the expenditure number you see there is pretty close. We have either a purchase order, all salary and benefits have been paid. It can tweak a little bit, but those funds, there are very specific rules on that. So that is going to be very close to the number, the final number you'll see for those grants. School food can have a little, a couple of things that they record as year-end entries. Those they have to have done by the end of August. So again, we'll just keep you posted on this, this whole report for a little while. Overall, and I did not bring glasses up here.
True.
Overall, all funds that we report, we're in a 94.41% collection on our revenue and a 90.27% collection of our expense to budget. So we are in fantastic shape right now. We've collected more money than we spent. That's always good. It looks like we could potentially have, depending on how those taxes come in for general funds, a little tiny bit, a fund balance increase. My last calculation was under $400,000, but I don't know those numbers and have no way to predict those tax collections because they don't go through us. So very excited. I mean, we're in great shape. Do y'all have questions? Okay, and one more. We just like to keep you updated. We've collected 41 months on our East SPOSS. Our total collection is $30,401,645.67. Our average collection is $704,347.07. That is steadily rising. Our January collection is still that largest one we got. And then, of course, that comes from December. So the Christmas expenditures that come through the county. But we still are predicting that we will hit our maximum collection by December. Possibly, possibly the first quarter of next year, but it looks like it could cap out in December. So again, as we, we'll keep you updated on all those collections. And that's going to be that.
But your Smith, you back. At this time, we'll call up our assistant superintendent, Chris Parker, and Mr. Parker will give us an operations and construction update.
I see y'all clapping back there. About to show what school's getting what here. Angela, you better write this down.
I did, yeah, yeah.
Since the last board meeting, you ready for this? Abby missed the best part of her department. Since the last board meeting, one month, nobody's gotten in trouble. Nobody's gotten attendance problem. Nobody's gotten a discipline problem. No, no kids have been sent to ISS or OSS or alternative school. God, these guys are doing a great job. But I do want to take today, we didn't do any recognition, so we didn't get to come up here and take some pictures and all that. So I took this purposely to go in a little more detail about some of our different departments because what they do, Amy and Abby do a great job with their people here. And I kind of got all the rest of the groups. You know, I got the miscellaneous groups. Abby does a good job with teaching large and stuff and Amy with finance. And I kind of got everybody else. So some of that stuff goes together and sometimes it doesn't. But I do want to highlight a couple of things about each of our groups. We got some of these people here, they do a really good job. They really do. There's people, and Amy and Abby's department too, just doing a fantastic job and doing it this time of year. Because a lot of times, things, you know, what are you guys doing when the kids aren't here? You know, nobody got in trouble, right? Well, teachers aren't here. So that was, that's, I mean, the teachers got to be off, and that's great. We're glad they did. But a lot of times, this is some of our tougher months. These are some of Amy and tougher months, some of our tougher months, trying to get things ready because you got a short window when they're not here to get things done. So I would talk a little bit about a bunch of different departments. First, human resources, if you're curious what they've been doing this summer. We onboard employees. We usually onboard about 50 people a year. On average, you can see those numbers at the bottom is total resignations. Those are resignation numbers you get from a year. So how many employees have resigned year of that fiscal year, what category they fit in, whether it's leadership, certified teachers, classifieds, anybody not a teacher, be a bus driver, food service, clerical, et cetera. And we usually have about 50 every year. We did have one year, it was a lot more direct than before this board came on, Dr. Thomas. But this year, we're right on that same kind of pace, retention rates over 91%. And we're onboarding the paraproses because you know, you guys know, one thing the board is doing and something we're paying more for this year in the budget is let our paraprofessionals come on with us. So that's exciting, but it's like having new hires. So we got like 30 something new hires in addition to the 50. So Alex is doing a good job and so are our team in HR, getting a lot of people on boarded. We're looking at board policies. We showed you that before, auditing things like job description, org chart, employee portal handbook. We got new teacher orientation next Monday. You know, we got the new teachers coming in. That's exciting. And then just the regular new year compliance in HR. In our communication group, you know, we had to put together a back-to-school hub. And I'm telling you, I didn't even told Dr. Thomas this, but we had, I'm going off what Beth told me in the front office, that answers the phone right here. We normally have a bunch of people calling, asking questions, right? And we did have some of that the last couple of weeks, obviously. We put out this hub, back-to-school hub, it's at the bottom there. If people need the address, if you're watching the video. But if you're not sure, just go to our website. It's right there on the front. Click back to school and you'll get a list of things that kind of looks, we had, Beth said we had nobody's called the last couple of days to ask questions, but we had, I think she said between eight and 10 different people called to want to know who put that together. And that was good. Thank them. So we had some people calling to thank the information, which I think that's, we put a historical marker there, first time I said. But I'm glad I can entertain you guys. I'm on two of about 15 here, so get ready. But we did do this back-to-school hub and try, and the good thing about doing these things is once you get them organized once, you can do them the next year and the next year and the next year. So we really tried to put some effort into back-to-school communication. And I think like two weeks ago, people were worried that they hadn't heard, but that was by design. You tell people too early and they don't pay attention either. So we tried to really, at 4th of July, come back, really give you as much information as we can about back-to-school. It's all there. People will know about back-to-school. It's there. We got better recognitions coming. So starting in September, you guys are going to see more dragon awards, more teachers of the month, more recognizing groups. And we've got a really good plan to recognize some of these good people. And that's what's upcoming in the communication group. Family and community engagement really involves title things. It can be parent activities like Title One Night. It can also be things like partners in education, which we're trying to really ramp up this year. And we got a really robust partner education program we've shown to the board. It's all things we're already doing, but we just haven't really been as organized with it. So we're going to be bringing you guys partners to recognize. We're bringing you, you're going to see more people getting credit for the things they're doing for schools. So we're really excited about that. We've been spending most of the summer organizing that. School safety, we renumbered a building at JMS at Ms. Combs' recommendation. Oh, we, you know, we updated some, every safety plan got updated. You know, of course, this time la, since this time last year, we've had a tragedy in Georgia at Apalachic High School, right? That was in September, so less than a year ago. We're trying to make sure we have everything. We always, I feel like, have been on the cut. We've been in the front of safety, we really have been, but we're trying to be even more so. You're going to see more mapping. We're using safety grant money to have better mapping for our law enforcement, better signage. And we're trying to work on the safety preparedness deal that only a few districts have been able to attain. It's pretty, pretty tough, but we're trying to get it to do all the things you have to do to show you're one of the safest schools in Georgia. And then on the 24th of July, which is the second day, we have teachers back, we're doing a full safety exercise at JMS. We're picking a school each year and we're having a full-on thing. They're going to be, I mean, that's our, every, every law enforcement, fire, sheriff, Jasper PD, all of them will be there showing the teachers how we're going to handle things if you ever have a, a critical event, which we're hoping is a giant waste of our time, but we're going to be ready, you know? So we're excited about what we're doing in school safety. Or we kind of combined student services, what Cory did last year with the student information group, the data department, which was something we had split in a different area before. Now that's together and what we're calling support services, where Cory works for our social workers, our counselors, you know, our nurses, all that connects those groups with our student records and student information. So they're doing things like getting schedules ready. We can report, Cory, no pressure, but we can report that schedules are, you know, right on pace, ready to start. And we're in good shape with having everybody's schedule ready to go for the first day at school. And working on the code of conduct, which is something you guys talked about at work session. Working on something called LiveSafe App. Tommy actually introduced me to this, that something Cherokee County does where they're able to help with things with kids going through mental crisis, health crises. And we're rolling that out this year with our principals. They're, they're finding that out, but we're going to talk more to them about it. But it's something that most, Forsyth does, Cherokee does, pretty customary, actually, in the bigger districts. But we want to have, we want to make sure our kids, our teachers have every opportunity to get help that any other big school would have. And so that's something we're going to be working on. We're working on now and be working on in the coming weeks. Doing the multi-disciplinary team meetings, which we started last year, really excited about all that. Health services, I got Cory made the PowerPoint. How about that? Cory and Gail talked at the Chamber meeting breakfast on Tuesday. Did a really good job. Had a lot of good feedback from that. People were impressed with that. Talking about what the school-based health center is. You guys have heard about this ad nauseam because you heard about it a year ago when we first talking about it. You heard about it a few months, every few months since. But a lot of our community people are just hearing about this for the first time. Dan told us he wants to write an article about it, like this is a thing. So the school-based health center offers health cover, you know, like going to the doctor's office for every kid, for every kid's family member. Okay, so if you're a family, it's at school, so it's centrally located. And they, they see everyone. So it's not really here to take away from, if you like your doctor's office, then you go there. But we have a huge percentage, I'm not going to give you the numbers Cory can give, but there's a huge percentage of kids and families in our district that don't report having anybody. They don't go to Piedmont or Prestige or, don't go anywhere. They just go to the emergency or go to the urgent care when something really, don't have a primary healthcare. Good Sam has partnered with us, has cost the district zero dollars. This, and there's a hundred and something of these in the state and 38 different districts, but a hundred and something school-based health centers in the state of Georgia. We're not pioneering this, but we are pioneering it for this area. And so it's going to be a really good thing. Can offer kids mental health, can offer dental, can offer vision, but also just physical health. So it's telehealth too. So it's located junior high where Canyon will be, but we can do things through the nurse's office at each school to work with the parent or work with the student if they have health problems. So really going to be exciting. You'll hear way more about that, but that's scheduled to be delivered in late July, I think the 21st, 22nd, right Jacob? And it may take us a week or two to get that thing really going once it's here. But we did, we are on schedule to have it here and hopefully ready to go by the first of August. And our goal on that was really the first of September for the grant to get the money. But we put a self-goal of August 1st and we're trying. We're going to be close. Technology, this is another department, Joey's here, so Greg's here. These guys do a good job with our technology, working with the techs in the building. And so children and teachers have the technology they need, but also working with the school network, right? It's kind of two of those things. So the board had asked us before about cybersecurity and things like that. So starting in February, March, we had the GSBA do a cybersecurity audit of us, okay? So if you look on the screen, the GSBA put us, we're that, that dot right there, it's a different color. And that's in the good quadrant. So there's four quadrants. The worst one's the red, the two yellow ones are medium, and the green one's the good one. So there's some other districts further in the green one, right? We're going to get even further in the green, but we're in the green. And that's all the people that use GSBA, which is probably, it's definitely more than half of the school systems in Georgia, probably more like two-thirds. And so I'm not going to tell y'all who those ones in the red are, but it's not us, okay? So we tried to ramp up our cybersecurity. We did that in February, March, just trying. That's, that probably isn't real technical. It's off of us answering some questions and showing them what we do. We had the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency. They, we just did this in the last few weeks. They provide a free service where they monitor your vulnerability, vulnerability. And so there's a vulnerability assessment. And we had this. And ironically, they gave us a really good grade. They gave us two or three things we could work on. And ironically, the two or three things they told us to work on, we're already working on. Like in something called MVR with camera upgrades, we already put into the budget for next year. So there's some things like that that we were already working on that can make us even better, probably further in the green, to use that analogy. But they also reported that we were in good shape cybersecurity-wise. And of course, that's one of those things that, you know, you're only as good as today. Tomorrow, we've got to be good again, and the next day, and the next day. So I'm not really bragging about that, but I do want to report some data that we didn't say. Other people said that, you know, we are where we need to be probably with the network and it can be a little better. And so we're going to work to get them a little better. We're also buying new student teacher device. Not every student or every teacher, but we're in the process of buying new student teacher device. But most importantly, we've done a bunch of camera upgrades. Every school, all six of them, are getting camera upgrades, most of which are at the principal's request. Like the principal worked with Joey, here's some areas where we're not, either the camera's not, it's old, or we don't have good coverage, or whatever it is. And so we try to cater it to the principal and to what the school needed. And those things have been ordered, so they really are. They're just, they haven't all been installed. I didn't put them on the highlights, but they're coming up. School nutrition, like always, there's a lot of rules. That's federal money in a lot of cases. You got allergy signage, it's a new thing. We had a meal price change we told you guys about last week, or last month, which will be very small. It's five cents in some areas, but there is slightly different meal prices. And we surplus a bunch of equipment. Most importantly though, I'm here to, to pitch a few things tonight. One was which back-to-school hub, partners in education, free or reduced lunch. If you don't have a free or reduced lunch form and you think you may qualify, bring it up here and we'll fill it in for you. I mean, we'll help you type it up if you don't, I mean, don't let some of them be a barrier if you think you can get free or reduced lunch. We don't qualify for the whole free or reduced lunch like some counties do. We just don't. Our average income for the county is too high for us to qualify where everybody eats for free. And we hate that. We wish that we were, but we're not. But we do have a lot of people in our county that would eat for free that don't fill out these forms. So please, if you can, and you think you may, fill out the application. If you don't want to fill it out because it's too much work, or you don't know how to do it, or contact us and we will help you. We also are planning on getting really, we're going to have a really nice cafeteria at the high school. And it is part of, it's not really part of the remodel, it's kind of a side project, so it's not going to be done in the summer, but we are going to really change that cafeteria look. This looks like an old cafeteria, it's going to look more like a restaurant, you know, put some dirt things on it. It's going to be really nice. But that's going to take a few more months. That's not something you're going to see when school opens, but it is going to be something that's upcoming. You can kind of keep it in the vacuum. Transportation is just right now about routing an organization. I mean, we're just trying to make sure we're ready to go on the first day of school. We do feel good about where we are with logistics. You know, this is the second year in the new system, second year and changes are right. So I do think just for that, it's going to be better. We also upgraded every bus camera. That's kind of a separate project, and I talked about with Joey, this was something going on. But every bus camera has been upgraded. That was necessary. We had some real issues. Those bus cameras were the older cameras. I think they had bus cameras before we had classroom cameras. So the bus cameras are kind of recycled and we're able to upgrade those using our SPOSS money this summer. So facilities and maintenance, which I know we're getting to the stuff y'all probably want to know about, which is where we are in the summer work. And Chris and Jacob and Stacy have really worked hard with their whole teams, making the place nice. And one thing about high school being remodeled is we can take all the high school custodians, you can put them other places because they can't be at the high school, right? And so we've been able to ramp up some of the other places, getting some things cleaned and fixed. And I know like JMS, and I know at Harmony and Hill City, some of those things, we've really been able to do a lot more than we've ever done before because we got more help. And so we've done the normal summer things with custodial, but we tried to do even more of it in some of the schools that weren't getting remodeled. We did resurface the gym floors. I think that's happening now, but I think most of them are finished. Resurfacing gym floors and a lot of preventative maintenance, you know, coming up mulch, mulching playgrounds, things like that, the regular things. On the projects, we'll go through real quick, one at a time, but we're pretty much finished here. This is the animal facility. This is in the back, back of the high school. If you, if you didn't know where you were going, you'd have a hard time finding. You and the coyotes are back there. But it's back behind the ag center. I mean, they really, I've really been impressed with what, if you know what that looked like a year ago versus what it looks like now, it's unbelievable actually what they're up to do. So from the fieldhouse project that you guys approved years ago, they took a lot of dirt. They built a field where the band could practice. By taking that field, they were able to make it flatter over here, an area that was never flat before, and were able to utilize this for the growth facility. It's beautiful. I'm telling you, it's one of the best around. It's all the way finished. There's two or three punch list items that somebody's got to come back and patch this pane or, you know, a couple of little things. We haven't brought the final thing to you yet, but we're, we're here. This is the inside. They're waiting on, the only reason pigs aren't in there today is they are waiting on some pens. Sackets is working with our, our ag people are on it. They're fine. They're working with Sackets to get some pens. The pigs right now are at the junior high, but when they, when they get those pens, I'll split them up between junior high students and high school students. And we'll be finished with that project, which honestly, that project in some way has been going on for a long time, with seven or eight years probably. Speaking of seven or eight years.
Long years.
Well, it was really in 2015. I can tell you, 2015, we, when the board meetings were over there and I gave out cupcakes. Me and only me and Amy got that joke. That, yeah, I used to give out cupcakes. I've come a long way. You need to write about that in a paper. I used to give out cupcakes at the board. But we did resurface like this tiny piece of the track and we, you know, we just, we just have constantly tried to get it into, it's a seven-lane track. No tracks are seven-lane. They're either six or eight. The eight gives you more options for hosting meats, you know? But we built the fence around it and made it hard. And so it's just been a constant back and forth between the board and operations groups. I mean, for at least since 2015, probably even before that, Chris and I meet. I know in 2015, I started getting brought into this. And as of today, it's a full eight-lane track. This is college-level surface, I mean, big time. And came in, and both these projects, under budget, on time. I was worried this project was going to go into school year when we talked about it a year ago. I gave you guys a timeline a year ago, and I put by August 1st, we'd be done. And I was actually kind of worried about that. And these guys were done before July 1st. State's credit Stacy, he stayed on them. And he let, they did some stuff. Credit Matt Combs, I don't like doing this part, but credit to Matt Combs, because they worked with us on in April and March, back when it was, we had to work with soccer and we had to work with track and we're able to do a few things that normally you'd have to wait until the summer to do. And since we did those and everybody worked together, we got this done. It's all the way done. It's beautiful. I mean, I'm really proud of it. I know you guys are too. And I know it was one of the things that symbolizes a lot of things, just something we were trying to do and we just couldn't do. And now we did. So regardless of how we got here, it's one of the best ones in Georgia. So you should be proud. And thank you to Stacy and Chris and Jacob or Matt, anybody else that helped with that. I talked so long, my clicker wasn't working. There's the other piece of the track, we'll sit close. And if you guys aren't familiar with track and something about intelligence, but if you wonder why the line, why it's different in some areas, that's kind of cool now, you know, it's a different color. But what it is, those are exchange zones. So like when they do the relay, that's where you have to be within the different colored handoff of the baton. So it's not like they just pick up a place and grid it up. They had to be, they always had to have a different markings, but they changed them, kind of like in football, went to changing the end zone to a different color. So it's pretty, you know, that's, that's cutting edge too there. Alright, so we took a building, another big project we did before we get into individual schools and then I'll be done. We took a building that was not being used across from Jasper Real School. The only thing in there was the server, kind of an important thing. So we couldn't really do much with it. The servers in there for the The servers in there for the whole district, really, really important, like million dollar thing. But nothing else was being used there because the building had been worn down. It used to be the central office back in Amy's day, you know, it was the central office. And then it had been a few different things, and the last year or two, it had been nothing. So to move the server was going to cost a certain amount of money, and we actually spent around that same amount of money just making it remodeled. We did clean up a few things on the inside, redid the parking lot. Parking lot was really bad shape. That's where a lot of our J M S teachers park. They still will be. It was, it was in bad shape. So we redid the parking lot, painted the building, painted the inside, cleaned up a few things. And I mean, that's what the inside looks like now. I don't have some before pictures on the inside, but that's because we didn't want y'all to see that. But it's a good place now. Joey and Greg got the best place around. They all be proud. And that network better stay in good shape. That's all I'm saying. Right?
Thank y'all.
Yeah. But they did a great job with that. Chris Williams kind of led that project. Jacob, he did a really good job with that. I mean, took a lot of pride. One thing that's happening, they're almost doing too good of a job because we give them something to do. Same way with Stacy, same way with all these guys. We give them something to do, and they go try to make it the best thing it's ever been. And sometimes that leads to people getting frustrated or jealous or whatever, something. That's okay. Let them do that. You know, we're trying to, everything we do, we're trying to make it where the next people are a long time from now that got to deal with this. And then this is one in places. They won't, they'll, I'll be way gone, and all of us, all of us will be before somebody's going to have to mess with that building again. And it's been messed with a lot of times, you know. So that's why we did that. You can see the where they got a, they got their own little warehouse in that building for technology. So that also helped us with getting another warehouse area cleaned out. So we surplused an unbelievable amount of things with Jennifer Oliver. We're going to recognize her next month, Jacob, because I mean, it's really, she's done, the board won't, she's done a phenomenal job of surplus. And we've gotten halfway through the surplus that I thought we'd be here. I mean, through the stuff at Old High School, we're about halfway through it. I thought it'd be ten years to get all that stuff out, and we're about halfway through it in one. Yeah. High school remodel. I don't have a ton of pictures because I don't want you to see it yet. I want to get all the way done. It's in really, the high school remodel is on track to finish. But I'm going to tell you, it's the tightest schedule now. You got to say, May twenty fourth, they start on May twenty fourth. They work every day. And they're going to go all the way to July twenty second. We told them try to be done on July twenty third because this is when teachers come back. They go working every day. And they're, we feel good about them getting done on that day. But it's tight. It's not like that track now. I mean, they've got this many days. And they're doing ceiling. So people understand doing the ceiling, doing the floor, and they're painting. And that seems kind of simple. It's not like everybody's getting everything brand new. They're redoing the floor. They're redoing the sun. They're redoing the paint. They're redoing the bathrooms. Bathrooms are done. You can see that picture on the right. And this picture on the left is the cafeteria. And I thought it was the best one picture to show you what it's all gonna look like. The floor is new. It's L V P floor. Nope, no tile floor. You got a wax or anything like that. You can't hardly tear it up. That floor will be there when all of us are going to. The light is all L E D. So it's obviously better energy efficient, brighter. I don't know if you've been in the cafeteria before this year, but it wasn't that bright. The paint's new, everything. I mean, every classroom is going to be new. This is a classroom that is done, and Jacob actually took these pictures. And this is the same picture, but every classroom has a dimmer, and it has L E D lights, and it has a timer. So you can dim the lights. And the picture on the left is if the lights are dim. The picture's on the light right is if it's not dim. But if you walk out of the room and nobody's in there for a period of time, the lights turn off automatically. If you walk in, the lights come on. Me and Dr. Thomas went over there the other day. We walked in some rooms, the lights came on, right? So that should save us money and efficiency. And of course, we're spending a lot. I'm not trying to tell you we're not spending a lot. But there is some energy efficiency, some long term planning there, trying to make it better. And I'm excited to show you the rest of the pictures like when we're all the way done. But we're on track. Stacy can attest, we're on track. But it is a big project. I mean, it is a massive project for one summer. And the junior high, they did this, they did this a few years ago. It was before you guys, most of you were here, but on in this position. But we did about five years ago redo the junior high. Okay, just like we're doing the high school now. And when we did that, we haven't had a lot to say, you know, so we don't talk about junior high very often with this stuff, because there's not a whole lot to do. The custodians, we borrow the custodians there all the time because they don't clean floors. There's no floors to clean. So a lot of stuff like that is just really good. And we want all our schools to be like that. So they will be. Within a few years, they all will be. So what we could do with the junior high was make it look a little cooler. So that's what we did, right, Canyon? We made it look cool. Trying to make, really got to try to build a brand at that junior high where it's a cooler place to be. I want kids to really want to go to school there. That's a tough age, but we're making that for an excuse for them. You know, make it a fun place to be. Canyon is the right person to do that. She she does, she does that to people. But this is something we can do. I can't help her with her job, but we can get her some money to make it look cool, you know. So that's what we did. We are going to repaint the parking lot too, Canyon. So try to control your enthusiasm about that. So y'all are not going to be excited about this, but I am. This is the oldest of the pictures, right? So the playground at J M S is like a serious problem. Because there was stuff from when Joe Wiggerton went to school there stuck in the, in the gutters.
It's true.
I mean, it was unbelievable. So we had to use a professional company to come in and clean it. Because what would happen is every few years, they'd come in there and plant grass. And then it would flood because the gutters are all clogged, and we'd have to go back and buy some more grass and mud and mulch and everything. So we're going, we did fix that problem, and we seeded. So it looks like this now. But next month, it's going to look like Augusta National, right, Jacob?
It's always like.
It is going to look good. And we do think if we can get it to look good, more importantly, we can get it to stay looking all right for a while, because that was really where the problem, we've had some real problems with this place. We also created them a science lab. We painted the building down at J M S. We're excited about that. And we're expanding the fence in that playground too, before school starts, but it just hasn't happened yet. So it's upcoming. We're going to do some classroom furniture upgrades over the course of this year. And over the course of this year, there's going to be a lot of H V A C replacements there. So the H V A C ferry is coming to J M S, but that'll be in the next four or five months. Harmony is going to have a remodel two years from now. So we're doing this high school this year. We already got the junior high. We're going to have a, we're going to have Hill City next year, Harmony the next year. But we did do the gym floor at Harmony. So if you look at the before and after picture, redo all our gym floors like this eventually. But this year, we did Harmony where the gym floor, they got a new logo they've had the last few years that they hadn't redone that gym floor. I don't know if they ever done. So two thousand six was the last time that gym floor was really done all the way down. And it's like to put that high school perspective, every three or four years, we're doing that at the high school. But the elementary school went nearly twenty years without getting a new gym floor. So they got a new gym floor. Stephen and I think we're excited. And they got some chair upgrades. You'd think chairs not a big deal. They did Hill City a few months ago with the chair upgrades, big deal. And Hill City, now Harmony will kind of get paused. Stephen didn't like hear this, but they won't get much else for like a year and a half or so. Because now Hill City's in the pause mode, right? Hill City got nothing, but Hill City about to get everything. So starting in the fall, we'll probably bring you a G M. You guys have already approved a contractor to do the remodel for Hill City for next year. We've already approved a year, we're a year ahead. But in October or so, we're going to try to bring you a G M P, and we'll start working. So like, it's possible that on fall break, we'll be doing some stuff at Hill City, and then again over Christmas, and again over winter break, and maybe on the weekends. Or in that way, in the summer, they just come in to do the last things like they're in high school now. So Hill City is going to have a year long remodel. We've already had some meetings. Angie's got them with people. I mean, it's going to be really, really nice. So today, they're going to feel like Tate and Harmony and everyone else got something, but their time's coming. And so Tate, Tate and J M S haven't been able to get full remodels. J M S is a long story, but they had something just a few years before, it's probably about eight or nine years, but they did something at J M S eight or nine years ago and used most of the capital money they. And so we've been trying to piece stuff together. Last year at J M S, we did a lot of stuff. And so we did the bathrooms. We did a lot of stuff like that. We're doing a little stuff we can at J M S, and then we're going to really come back there in two or three more years, probably after Harmony, and do some J M S stuff. Tate, because of the age of the place, I don't know if y'all noticed, but Tate going to be a hundred next year. Next year. That building, they tell me the school's been there a long time. The school's already been there a hundred and some odd years. But that one building burned down or something, and then they rebuilt it. It was my stories. Is that right? It burned down, and they built it back in nineteen twenty seven. So the one you see when you ride down fifty three is from nineteen twenty seven. And so next year, not this coming school year, but the next one, that'll be their hundredth year. So when we get to that hundredth year, we had a three year plan for that hundredth year. Last year, we did all H, the H V A C ferry came to Tate. It wasn't exciting, but the air conditioning worked better. This year, we did a lot of stuff you can see. So when you drive down the road to Tate, they just redid the parking lot the last two days. Whole parking lot getting redone. They did the park, they did the playground in the lower area. This is what it looks like now, beautiful place. We got a R F P today that you're going to vote on in a few minutes on the playground on the upper area. You know, and so that's the part that we had donations for. I think Huber and some other groups came up here, and we had some donations. We had to go do the whole process. We've done all that. Jake did a good job of that. Stacy and Chris, they got a plan. We're presenting to you today. But that upper playground is coming. This is the more stuff at Tate. Went in that annex building, the lower building, not the old building, and redid the floors. The teacher was happy about that. You can see the, yeah. Next year, the third phase of the Tate three year remodel is we'll get into the old nineteen twenty seven building Scott. So it's a little bit tougher. But we are going to paint in there and do whatever we can do to make that thing. When they start that hundredth year, a year from now, the place is going to be about as new as it can be for a hundred years old. And we're excited about that. And so we appreciate you guys. I think, I know I went along, I went along on purpose because y'all need to hear about these people. You know, what things they're doing. But we got a really good team working in all those departments, doing all those things with very little credit. And they don't care about that. But they're doing a lot of good things for kids. And we messed some stuff up too. I mean, we definitely could have reworded some stuff different in open house, or we could have, we've done some stuff we could have done better, okay? But these people are working hard. I mean, they're trying hard. And so I wanted to take some time and brag on all of my, and we want to thank you guys for your opportunity. We can't do any of that stuff if we don't have the money to do it, or we don't have the commitment from you all to do it. So thank you for allowing us to do those things. But that's my very short report, Dr. Thomas.
If I may, a quick comment. The board charged superintendent and Mr. Parker over the last year and a half to modernize our facilities, modernize our curriculum. Any of most of the things that just mentioned would be headline worthy and very significant. There was more than a dozen of them. That's running. And if they've pushed you a little bit, it's a stat. This is why they were being pushed, and this is fantastic. We are very proud of it.
Thank you, guys. And just one final item before we get to our action items. Just a couple of upcoming events for our district. We do have two big dates coming up over the next couple of weeks. We do have our leadership kickoff next Wednesday, July the sixteenth. And this is where we have our district leaders, our assistant principals, our principals all together. And it sets the tone, it sets the stage for upcoming school years. We're really excited about this coming Wednesday. And then the following Wednesday is our pre-planning kickoff for our district convocation. And that's a really good day as well. This is, it kicks off the school year. Every employee who is supposed to work that day will be there, will be performing our center on the campus of the high school the morning of the twenty third. And it's really the only time of the school year that we have everyone who's supposed to work that particular day for the district to be there. So we're very excited about setting the stage for our school year that day. As Mr. Parker indicated, our summer projects are going very, very well. The bulk of our attention has been at the high school, but that doesn't mean that we're not working in other places as well, as you've seen in this presentation. And then just a few upcoming dates, we do have pre-planning that starts the twenty third of July and runs through the thirty first. And then August the first, we have a staggered start. That's the first day of school for our new students to that particular school. August the fourth is the first day of school for all the kids. And then our work session is on the eighth, and our regular board meeting on the fourteenth. That's all I got. It's a lot quicker than Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Approval of personal action report. Do I have a motion to approve the personal action report as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor. And do we have anyone? One of states, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the F Y twenty five budget amendment as presented? Do I hear a sec?
Sec.
These are any further discussion? All in favor. The next unit item is approval of the tentative F Y twenty six budget. Dr. Thomas, would you like to add anything?
Yes, ma'am, I would. At this time, I'm going to call up our chief financial officer, Amy Smith, to give us a few pieces of information about our proposed initiative for F Y twenty six.
I will be brief. Mr. Parker. We did want to point out a few things about this. Number one, we had two budget workshops, so that gave opportunity for anyone to come. We'll also have a public hearing later in this meeting for people to speak if they choose to about the upcoming budget. In our general fund, that's where we have most of our activity. That's where we pay for most of the normal operations of the school system. So I'll point out just a few things. One, we did a certified employee local supplement increase of one percent. So we had committed to that a couple of years ago. We've been able to do that consistently. And I've already heard from several certified staff members that have heard that when y'all approved it in June, and they're very pleased. So when we share that information with you. We did, as Mr. Parker indicated, bringing the paraphrased back in house, which there was an expense attached to that. So we wanted to do that. Got a lot of processing to do between now and August payroll, but we're happy to have them back in house, and I think they're very pleased. I don't know if Parker said this last month, but out of the, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty, out of the twenty nine, all but three came back in house. Two now. Okay, so all but, you know, I did not think that would happen. But I was very surprised that they did. So they do want to be our folks. So that's great. I'm glad to have that. And they'll have our full benefit package when they come back in with us, which includes state health and T R S benefits. We did have two increases that are worth mentioning when it comes to benefits. T R S increased by one point one three percent. Well, for the county, that is over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year. So that's a large increase. But the one that's was even more, had more of an impact, came in two phases, and that was our state health benefit increase. You know, y'all are aware of this, but I kind of want to say this for the public. We were aware of one increase that was coming that was a little smaller. It was more like a three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand increase. But you know, we did not get that final information until May that they added an additional increase. Well, the total of that, just for our employees who participate, is about seven hundred and sixty two thousand. So between the two, that is over a one million dollar increase. It's a one point one million dollar increase. But we were still able to hold our general fund expenditures to less than a one percent increase from the previous year. And Dr. Thomas did point out it's a point nine five percent increase. So we're very, very pleased that we were able, we did a lot of, we did a lot of work in that budget. We looked at operating expense. We looked at software programs. We looked at salaries and benefits and really tried to like pull this in. So we're very pleased with the budget that we're presenting to you tonight. I will, for the record, read the total general fund expenditure total is sixty three million, eight hundred, nine thousand, eight hundred, twenty two dollars, which is only just barely over six hundred thousand dollars more than our F Y twenty five budget, budgeted expenditures. Y'all have any questions? That's all I have.
Miss Smith, thank you. That's for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the F Y twenty six tentative budget as presented?
So moved. Sec.
Any further discussion? All in favor. Our next item is the request for a new board policy. Dr. Thomas, would you like to give us some information on it?
Yes, ma'am, I would. So this past spring, our general assembly passed House Bill three forty, which is called the Distraction Free Education Act. It was signed into law by Governor Kemp in May. And this law prohibits cell phones and electronic devices in grades K eight in all public schools in Georgia. And based on that legislation, school districts must pass a policy by January first, twenty twenty six that reflects this legislation. And then school districts must implement this policy by July first, twenty twenty six. And as a district, we are proposing that we add J C D A F to our board policies. And so J C D A F will be on the table until the August board meeting, then we'll vote to approve this policy. So in our school district, we want this to take effect this school year, prohibiting electronic devices in grades K eight during school hours. This gives, yeah, two final items. First, in our elementary schools, and at J M S, and at P J, this has been our practice. And we're moving this from practice to policy. And so we're asking our parents and guardians for help with this. And then secondly, just to reiterate, this is a state law. That is, that we are supposed to go into effect at the latest July of twenty twenty six. We decided to go ahead and begin the implementation this fall.
I think that's great. Did you have a motion to? Do I hear a sec?
Sec.
Is ready for discussion. All in favor. Action item E is approval of a construction manager for the Tate Elementary School Playground Project. Dr. Thomas, again, would you like to add anything here?
Just a couple of things. So we've completed the bid process for the upper playground at Tate Elementary. So we've completed the bid process for the upper playground at Tate Elementary. Uh, and as Mr. Parker had shown on the PowerPoint, we've already done that for the lower elementary, sorry, the lower playground at Tate, excuse me. Um, and so the upper playground at Tate is what we're bidding on and what we have completed the process, we're voting on shortly. And of course, back in the spring, we did receive a sizable donation from Huber for that playground. And so we completed the bid process and we're recommending that Southeast Outdoors Solutions be awarded this contract.
Sure. Do I have a motion to approve Southeast Solutions as the construction manager for the playground project at Tate Elementary as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Our next item is approval of the capital outlay project application. Dr. Thomas, would you happen to have any details on this?
Yes ma'am, I will, I do. Uh, so for capital outlay grants, these are grants that provide funding from the Georgia Department of Education that can help us pay for these projects within the schools, okay? And when districts want to apply to use these capital outlay funds, they submit an application to the state. And so we're asking for approval for our application. And specifically, this application includes replacing the roof at Hill City. Uh, both renovations and modifications at Harmony Elementary, replacing part of the roof at PJ as well as some HVAC units at PJ and replacing some HVAC units at JMS. All of those items are included in our application.
Do I have a motion to approve the twenty?
So moved. Second.
Y'all make this decision. Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Approval of superintendent contract, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent contract as presented?
So moved. Second. Second. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to say something. I am, and I feel very strongly with the rest of the board of Greece, but I am so thrilled to have Dr. Thomas here. As you can see, just from things that have gone on tonight, it's all, we're all a team. Like his leadership and, and uh, Mr. Parker's leadership as well and I, we've just been very blessed. And I'll acknowledge you're here, but yeah.
All in favor.
If we approve this, his contract will go for two, year, two more years now, eleven months. But that's correct.
So it's a two-year extension.
Just a two-year extension.
So he stuck with us for another three years.
All in favor. Oh my gosh, both of y'all are talking to me at the same time, I'm sorry.
To run to that photo, we had to go back to Mr.
We did, that was where it was.
Okay, I got my question, sorry, Mr.
So would you like to, before you can tell us that you'd like to leave, uh, we're gonna get you a sign right now. Because that's how serious we are.
Okay.
If that's in kind of.
Absolutely, thank you. He's got the camera. Hey, you play it down?
Yeah.
I got it.
I got it.
What did you wanna know? Shall we come up there and get your sign? Real close?
Yeah.
You have.
I'm getting just a shirt. You got like a saddle, like saddle. Look at thing over there. First time.
Sorry. Turned it back down.
I've been talking to you for about two or so. I just do.
Listen, Jennifer.
Don't. To look up and smile.
I love her.
But she was. It's not thing, I mean, this is what it is. Good enough.
Okay. Okay. So I need to do the.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
No, I did a couple. Do I need to just? This is what I did. We have done that. See. It is, it's still there. Okay.
Okay, so let's go back to the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six code conduct. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six code of conduct as presented?
I, I make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Um, and then do I hear a second?
I will say a good thing.
Okay. All in favor.
Press.
Let's take the next action item is approval of making the last day of school, the upcoming school year, a half a day for students. Again, Dr. Thomas, would you like to add anything?
Yes ma'am, so we did, we've already approved next year's school calendar. We did this back in November of twenty twenty-three. Just we're asking to amend one item on that calendar and that is making the last day of school a half day. This helps with transportation logistics because that last day of school is also graduation day for the class of twenty twenty-six. That's our, that's our recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve changing the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar to a half day for students on the last day of school, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Okay, following items are on the consent agenda tonight. Financial reports, MOU with Georgia Hope, MOU with Shore University, MOU with Help a Child Smile, Georgia Dental Outreach PC, MOU with K S U Nursing Programs. Minutes from the following board meetings, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five PM, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, six PM, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, four PM, July seventh, twenty twenty-five, three thirty PM. Surplus Finance Department, Jasper Middle School, Fed Department, Food Service, Technology and Warehouse. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Charles Sedkin.
Is there any further discussion?
It's clear.
All in favor. Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation at tonight's meeting?
No ma'am, we have not.
Then we are to public hearing number one on the FY twenty-six budget. So we have anyone that would like to ask a question or? No. If we have anyone that would like to ask questions at work, safety thing. Now let's be cutting.
So I call the board, minds are clear.
Just to make a, I, I do have a question, just to make it. What a plan. The expenditure rise that we had here was not a way of getting out of that, right? That was imposed upon us by the state.
Uh, the expenditure cost to TRS.
Yes.
Yes, those are mandatory contributions for both of those benefits.
Okay.
So that is um, our contribution to, it is not, it's, it's a refund, there is no way around those.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, it was a billion dollars.
Million one.
A billion one. And we asked for a six hundred thousand dollar lift fee. So we actually cut the budget from last year in the other areas by about five hundred thousand dollars.
So the budget was cut.
Well, we added one point one million, but we only asked for six hundred thousand more as well. Right, so again, it was actually from the categories we had last year. We asked them that.
And unfortunately, the state came out and said, that's not gonna work, we want more, right?
Right.
Okay, just to make it clear.
We, we did lose um, around four hundred thousand dollars for any uh, due to decrease FTE. So we were able to take care of that too.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, actually more than.
And we have already voted on all the projected growth back. Within that climate, it's a pretty great year. We, we'll come in pretty well through the year, but we still, I've not seen the digest, it's not ready.
No, it's not. Uh, last conversation with a county representative, um, they did expect because of the changes due to House Bill five eighty-one, that it could potentially be two to three weeks later than when we typically receive it. So um, we're probably looking at, I would think September into August. Um, but we will keep you updated as soon as we get it, let you know.
Just a reminder, the House Bill five eighty-one reduces the amount of any assessment increase. And we, we almost had, almost had exemption. Okay, about it.
We have it?
Yeah.
Check it. It's gonna move on to board comments, do we have any board comments?
Just real brief, uh, guys sitting here tonight, thank you all, and Dr. Thomas, thank you. Two great years, I mean, I, I feel so good about where we're at and everything's being accomplished and that's due to all of you and his leadership and so thank you each and one.
There is a matter that I want to show their value. This is an award that this new district receives. The new field house we received, similar awards for the access, this is an efficiency award. The water systems, heating systems, et cetera, for the building. My ready debt, almost fifty percent more efficient than what had been used in the past. So we are trying to be good stewards of tax money. Just wanted everybody to see.
Right. Thank you.
Every one of you and every one of our teachers, everyone that's going back to, to work has the year that you really, really want. I hope it's blessed and I hope it's happy and I hope it is everything that you guys want. I really do. And if it's not, comes off to us, maybe we can help you out a little bit. But I hope it's every, I, I hope it's just a great year.
Do you have something I'd like to say?
I feel that I am indebted to you. Y'all have taken the school system that I grew up in. And you've made the very best that I could possibly believe in. So thank you. I'm super proud to be a dragon, I really am.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor. We are adjourned at seven oh two.